Welcome to the Board of Education's December 1st Work Session Meeting. Please stand as we observe a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Ms. Babb.
Do we have any elected officials here tonight?
As was public notice, the Board met in executive session this afternoon at 4:30 with members from the Knox County Law Department. And I would like to take a moment to have Mr. Dupoir share some information regarding our executive sessions and the upper meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pursuant to a couple different cases, Smith versus Anderson County Board of Education being the most prominent boards of education, and other boards for that matter, are able to meet with their law departments to discuss pending litigation and matters that could turn into litigation. This board holds those executive sessions every once in a while, usually every quarter, but can be held more frequently if needed. It's not a time for the board to deliberate. Board members do not discuss matters pending before this board. It is a time for the board members and attorneys with the law department to discuss litigation as I've discussed. Questions can be asked of our law department. There's also another question that I believe has arisen with regard to the pending Sixth Circuit appeal from the Eastern District Federal Court injunction on masks. And I believe that question revolves around strategy. The way strategy works is that it comes from the law director as an elected official, comes straight from the county charter, which has been voted on by the public. So that's where the strategy comes from. However, our department carries out the will of the board. And that will is a public vote. This board had a public vote on masks, took those away over the summer, and appeal from the Eastern District Federal Court injunction on masks. And I believe that question revolves around strategy. The way strategy works is that it comes from the law director as an elected official, comes straight from the county charter, which has been voted on by the public. So that's where the strategy comes from. However, our department carries out the will of the board. And that will is a, you know, is a public vote. This board had a public vote on masks, took those away over the summer. And so that is what this law department has been defending and acting upon in the court's strategy. And there has not been a vote on masks since. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a reminder that TSBA is hosting several one-hour superintendent search forums tomorrow, December 2nd, to seek stakeholder feedback. The schedule includes a community forum at 6:00 p.m., but please keep in mind that anyone can attend any of the forums that work best with their schedules. Each of the meetings will be held in the Andrew Johnson Building Boardroom, and complimentary parking will be available at the Dwight Castle Parking Garage if attendees bring their parking ticket to the meeting. The full forum schedule is available on the Knox County Schools website and can be found at knoxschools.org. Please keep in mind, if you are unable to attend one of the forums tomorrow, we also have an online survey available, which can be, also be accessed through our website. Are there any requested changes to the agenda? So we have a motion to approve by Ms. Horn, a second by Ms. Bab. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, and I will turn this over to Superintendent Thomas for your report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Hope you won't be too upset tonight. It's a brief report, so brevity is the goal. Just a few, just a couple of things, actually. Last night, we held a graduation ceremony recognizing the latest class of recruits from our security division. There were 10 graduates. These officers were sworn in after completing their nine-week training course, saying, "I want to congratulate them again on this tremendous accomplishment." I'm very pleased to see a strong new group of other officers joining the district, and I'm grateful for the work of Chief Jason Perryard to maintain the momentum of the training program. Jason has done a great job in transitioning from the leadership this year, and also I think we're going to see outstanding accomplishments from Jason and our security force. I'd also like to express my appreciation to our school's security officers who've made a commitment to protect our students, employees, and school communities. And, Madam Chair, that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, and I think Mr. Rutter is here to share some student data tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent, members of the board. I appreciate you having me back. I was telling the guys over there that I tried to find a funny, like, data joke, and there's not any out there.[763.51][763.51](Laughter). And even the ones I found, nobody would understand but me. So, yeah, so this is the third installment of our Data Moment, and so if you recall, we started this back in, like, the last week of September. And so when we met at that point, we were talking about kind of overall student achievement and proficiency across different student groups. And so last month, we talked a little bit about growth, overall student growth, school level of growth, particularly at the high schools, and growth amongst different student groups. And so I had a request this time to kind of talk a little bit more about student achievement. So this time, we're going to look at student achievement through a little bit different lens, and that will be through the achievement at different subjects and grade levels. So. So you've seen this slide before. This was part of the very first one we did. And so, but I just wanted to remind people that, you know, TCAP performance is categorized in four levels. It's mastered, on track, approaching, and below. So the blue and green segments in this particular chart represent mastered and on track. And so those two categories are the categories that would be, represent proficiency as according to, according to the state benchmarks that are set. So the other, one other thing we mentioned last time is, you know, when we look at things at the district level, there's a lot of data involved in a lot of students. So we typically don't see large shifts from year to year in terms of student achievement. But, so you can see from 2017 to 2019, the green and blue segments remain, I mean, there's just incremental change. There's usually 1% or less change, so, across years. But, you know, along came COVID-19, and, you know, it had really negative effects on student achievement. So ours, our overall achievement dropped by 3.8% that year, last year, compared to the previous testing cycle. And, you know, if you compare that to the state, the state fared a little worse. So they dropped about 5%. And so, you know, the overall message, the last time we talked about achievement, was that, you know, the pandemic had pretty serious effects on our student achievement, and kind of doesn't matter how you slice up the data, nobody was safe, right? That was kind of the overall message. So I'm going to sound a little bit like a broken record tonight, I'm afraid. So just bear with me. So the first subject I want to look at is English Language Arts. We call it ELA for the most part. And so you can see, this looks very similar to the last chart that I had up here. So you can see, again, you know, proficiency is not moving around a whole lot prior to the pandemic. It's holding steady at about 40% in those three years. And then, again, you can see the width of the blue and green segments shrink somewhat. And so our ELA proficiency overall across all grade bands dipped 6.5% compared to 2019. And so just to put that in perspective, that's, it's pretty, it's pretty comparable to what happened across the state. The state overall dropped 6%. So we dropped half a percent more than the state overall, but it's pretty close. So this next chart divides that up even farther into different grade levels. So each triplet of bars represents a grade level proficiency for each of the last three years. So the bars on the far, three bars on the far left represent proficiency for third grade in 2018, 2019, and then in 2021. Same thing's true for fourth, fifth, all the way up through eighth grade. So these are, these are the non-EOC subject, non-EOC grades. So you can see, when you look across through there, if you compare the middle bars to the far right, like, this pattern is present, like, the decrease in proficiency is present in almost every grade level, except fourth grade being the exception, and it stayed the same there, 36%. So when we look, when we look across through there, the declines range from about 7% to 10%, and the biggest declines are in our middle grades, six through eight.
Can I ask a question? I don't know that it would be you, because I know you just look at the data. But when you look at that fourth grade, there's such a big dip from how they did in 2018 to 2019, and then it held steady, and I just didn't know if anybody sort of had any idea why that might have happened.
I do not, off the top of my head.
I didn't think.[1052.42][1052.42](Laughter). You just take the numbers and analyze them.
I've looked at so many numbers since then, it's, you know, it's all blends together. But I can investigate that if you'd like.
Because, I mean, it's interesting, it's like, it did not dip from 2018 to 2019, which was 8%.
Yeah.
And what's interesting is, no other grade did that. Every other grade.
I know.
Which is, it seems just, there's something.
I'll be honest, like, when I see things like that, I tend to think there's something in the test, like, the instrument itself.
Yeah, okay.
So, and that might not be true, but I kind of suspect that a lot of times.
Especially when it's just two of grades.
Right, right. Okay, so.
Mr. Rutter, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Yeah.
So kind of, similar survey into, you might not know the answer to this question, but looking at the eighth grade test scores, do you know maybe why they are noticeably lower than all the third, fourth, fifth, sixth, and seventh proficiency levels?
I don't have, I don't know why, but what you're going to see in, like, especially when we look at math, like, it's even more pronounced in the mathematics subjects. So I do think, I think one of my takeaways from looking at grade level data, and we identified this when we were looking at, we did our needs assessments for the ESAR planning, like, this is one of the things we are trying to address, is there tends to be a dip from fifth to sixth grade, and the students aren't recovering, like, in the, when they're in the middle schools. So, so I think, I think the teams that were on the ESAR planning did some investigation into that, and, like, I know there's a new curriculum, math curriculum was to address the math one. So, like, there's certain things in there to address that. But, you know, I don't, I don't know, I don't know what the root causes were that they identified. Okay, so for the high school subjects, it's a, you know, same song, different dance. Like, so English 1 declined about 6%, and English 2 declined 7%. So, so overall, you know, my takeaway from the ELA section of this is that, is that, you know, we had declines everywhere, but they're, like, specifically in the middle schools, they were larger, and that probably bears looking at. So we switch, go on to math proficiency. So again, at the.
Steve, just a quick question, Steve.
Yeah.
So that, both those last two slides, those numbers are made up of mastered and on track combined? Is that, is that what makes up the proficient number?
Yes, yeah, that's a combination, like, when I say proficient, that is the combination.
Right, it's the combination of both those.
Yes, sir, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so, yeah, sorry, if you, please interrupt me if you, because I, sometimes I assume things that I shouldn't. So, so when we look at math, again, you know, we were pretty stable from 2017 to 2019 when we put, we put all the data together. So we were hovering right around 36% across those three years for proficiency. And like I said, so our most severe proficiency decreases occurred in math, and we weren't alone in that. Like, that happened across the state of Tennessee, and it happened across the nation. So, so as bad as COVID was for learning loss, it was the worst for mathematics, it appears. So we, our proficiency declined 8.6% from 2019 to 2021. And if you compare that to the state, the state declined 12% overall. So we actually, we fared better than a lot of students across the state, but it's still quite a, quite a large drop. So again, this is a similar, a similar slide we had for ELA for each of the grade levels. So again, you can see decreases in each individual grade level, and some of them are, you can see, they're larger than they were for ELA, and they're particularly large in the middle grades again. Right? So, so, so I think the middle grades is one of the, one of the things that we're trying to address with ESAR, our ESAR funds, and that was one of my, one of my takeaways from looking at all this a while back. So, so the high school subjects, okay, so high school subject, I'll go ahead and tell you, like, I have a harder time interpreting these, and I'll tell you why. It's because we only tested, we tested between 70 and 70, wait a minute, 75 and 80% of our students. We normally test almost everyone, right? So if we're comparing, if we're comparing Algebra I from 2019 to 2021, we're missing about 20% of our students. So they just didn't take the test last year. So, so I don't know what to make of that, because, because it depends on who didn't take the test, if you're trying to make comparisons. But you can see, like, our proficiencies were lower last year compared to prior years. And I'll, I want to point out something else, too, with the integrated math. It's even tougher, because the pools of students changed so much from between 2018 and 2021, because we had some schools piloting integrated math early on in 2018, and then, you know, as, at some point, those schools decided to end the pilot, and they went back to the more traditional math sequencing. So, so that's why there's only one bar in Integrated Math III, because we only have one school doing it now.
Can somebody explain integrated math? Because especially, like, when you look at the first year of it, I mean, it's not good. And I just was, I mean, is it a really, I mean, is it a hard level of math? I mean, like, I don't even know what integrated math means.
It, I'm probably not the right person to answer that question, but I can try. Yeah, I can try. So, so from my understanding is, it's just a reorganization of the sequencing in the math curriculum, from what I understand. So, so in other words, like, when I took math, I took Algebra I, then geometry, then Algebra II. So what integrated math is, it takes concepts in Algebra I and geometry at the same time, and then Algebra II and geometry at the same time, and tries to interweaves all that together.
So it's almost as if they expose it all together?
Yeah, 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 I think, I think the idea, like, I'm really getting far off my, like, I think the idea is to provide a bigger picture in terms of mathematics, the mathematical landscape, right? Yeah, you can, yeah.
Okay, so let's hope Gary Petco's not listening. He's our math supervisor. But here's what, here's how I understand it. So integrated math integrates geometry and the algebra standards, so that in Algebra I, what we consider Algebra I, in integrated math I, it is 60% Algebra I and 40% geometry. So if students are learning about how to find, and this is where I don't want Gary to listen, if they're looking at how they find the area of a particular shape, they may have numbers that are not whole numbers, but they may have decimals or fractions. And so they're integrating what they know about decimals, fractions, and their algebra skills along with their geometry skills. So they're getting the exposure over time. And the reason people might want to go to integrated math sometimes is that students then have exposure to their algebra skills all three years, and they have exposure, exposure to the geometry skills all three years. So there's not this break in the middle, where it's Algebra I, take a break for geometry, Algebra II. We do see some of the integration happening anyway, but the integrated math is strategically structured, so that it is actually integrated algebra and geometry.
Are we still offering it?
Just at L and N STEM.
Okay.
Does that answer the question?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Shannon, before you go, question. So, so has it always just been offered at L and N?
West piloted it as well. And they moved away from it, because their feeder schools were not offering it in the eighth grade year, so it was creating a transitional problem, because the middle schools go to different high schools, and so the students weren't on a consistent path.
So if the proficiency, like, what do you, okay, two questions. One, the first one, what do you think is the difference in integral math I and then II, 9% proficiency, and then all the way up to 47% in the II? So why do you think there's such a discrepancy?
So is, what is that?
So it says integral math in, in I was 9% proficient, and then II was 47% proficient. Any idea?
I don't have an idea about that. I mean, I have some ideas that I would not want to put out there publicly without going through some feedback protocols.
Okay, and so third, second question would be, so 47% is higher than any other percentage on here. Of course, we're talking about motivated students at L and N, so obviously that's going to be, play a role. But are, is, is Mr. Petco looking at whether we need to move toward this kind of concept for everybody and get middle schools in line for that?
We did some work with all of our high schools on whether or not we should move to integrated math, and at this point, our recommendation would be that we, we hold steady with where we are, because math standards are changing in two years, and so we don't want to make any broad changes now and then have to change again in two years. So that's a conversation that we'll have with our department chairs and our math teachers as we get ready for the next round of standards. And, because they'll also, at that time, release the next round of courses that are available to us, and we don't know if integrated or standard Algebra I will be the courses that they make available. Mr. Petco is on the committee with the state that is reviewing all of that work, and so he's keeping us informed of where they are in the decision-making, and we're planning to start conversations with our teachers in the spring to get ahead of that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Owen, I think Ms. Owen, you can have a question for.
I do, I'm not sure for whom. Do the scores that you're looking at for integrated math come from test questions that are specific to those standards? Or do they come, okay, so they don't come from algebra and geometry?
No, it's a different, it's a different test altogether.
Thank you.
And so, like, somebody's questioned a minute ago about why the difference. I can, I will tell you this, like, in, because, because West is phasing it out, right? So like, I can tell you, we, I looked, because integrated math, we tested 53 kids in integrated math I last year. So integrated math II was about three times that number, because we already had kids in it, right? And so they're going to, they're finishing out. So like, we're, you're really comparing two really different groups of kids. That's one possible explanation.
One of the other things is that with West, the students who were in Algebra I in eighth grade stayed in traditional geometry and then traditional Algebra II. So it was the students who didn't have Algebra I in eighth grade who were taking integrated I, II, and III.
Ms. Bab.
Well, and I was just to Ms. Horn's point, like, you look at the integrated math II, and you're like, wow, they did so great. But if you look at integrated math I, it was worse than anybody's ever done in math. So it's, but I wonder if that's also going from a larger pool of kids in integrated math I to not very many kids are sticking with it. So you have, like, that small group at L and N. I don't know, but it's like, it's like the two, integrated math II makes you think, gosh, we need to do this, but when you look at year I, you're like, nobody knows what in the world they're doing.
Right, yeah.
I want to grill Mr. Petco.
Yeah, yeah, and the other question, like, this is a question I have, just so you know, like, that our department has, is, like, I don't I don't know how many Integrated Math exams are given across the state. But there's a, there's a, there's a certain number you need to, to, for reliability and, and things like that for tests. And I'm not sure who's all, who are all taking it. So, I know, I do know that some of our accountability counterparts at the State Department, when they launched the, launched Integrated Math, were concerned about that, so. Okay, okay, so science, this is, this is an easy, easy slide to interpret. Because there's no past years on here, this is all 2021 data because we had new science standards and this is a new test. So it doesn't make sense to compare it to what it was before. So if you add, if you add the green and blue bars, the on-track and mastered bars, we, our proficiency is about 45, was about 45% for last year. And the proficiency across the state was 38%. So we did a little bit better in our science exams than, than a lot of other folks. And then, then the last subject here is social studies. And so social studies kind of bucks the trend. And so just so you know, we only give social studies exams in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade and US history. So the, the elementary students don't, don't take social studies exams.
Can I ask a question, kind of going back to the, wherever it was where we only had the one year of data? So like we were just talking about, they're about to change math standards. So I guess that concerns me from a data standpoint of, are we starting all over again and we don't compare to the past?
Yeah, kind of, kind of.
So how do we ever know if we're doing better? I guess is, what's bothering me.
One, one would like to have multiple years of data in a row, but that's a dream I have. It hasn't happened since I've been in my job. So, 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 yeah, you, you make a good point, right? So, so the way these tests are constructed, like, they have to, they have to do a pilot test to look for, look for bad things in the test to take, remove. So that year doesn't count at all, right? So then you kind of skip a year and then the following year is the operational test. And that's when you start getting the data back for, for this.
I mean, to follow up a little bit, and maybe this is Dr. Rieswicker's standing question, but how do we know if we're ever changing the bar or moving the bar? If when the standards change, I mean, there's, there still should be some way to me that we can tell if we're getting our kids better?
Yeah, yeah, we, we will still, we will still get results. Like, they just won't publish them or anything like that, so.
Well, another, I mean, another part of that comment is you're, what we're basically saying is that proficient being tested on one set of standards does not mean proficient against another set of standards, right? And so.
Yeah, well, it's just a different exam, different test, so, so.
Right, but for analyzing, analysis and comparison sake, if proficient on this set of standards in this test doesn't necessarily mean proficient on this.
I would agree with that, yeah.
So I have the same question that Virginia has. How do you, how do you have good analysis and be able to really move whole systems when you're constantly changing what you're comparing?
I, I think, I think the, the, I mean, these guys can chime in if they'd like, but, yeah, go ahead.
I think, no, it's a really, it's a really good, good question and a lot of what we think about. And it's why we use multiple measures. So, you know, we have external assessments as well, such as, you know, our AIMS web screeners that let us know if they're making progress as far as those foundational skills. We look at ACT, we look at a lot of other data sources that help us to know. And, you know, these tests are designed to give us feedback along the way on how our students are doing in order to make sure they're prepared, both for ACT, but even more than that for being ready to go to work or be employed or, or enlist. And so as we adjust the standards, we're working a lot with our university partners and our employers to find out what are the skills that students need to come to them with as they leave the 12th grade. And then backwards plan from there to, so what does that look like over time? So in the new math standards, we know we're going to see a lot more data and measurement because even in your humanities majors now and in your humanities fields, there is a requirement for you to be able to understand data. And so our standard, our math standards previously were very calculus-heavy. And so these are going to have a greater emphasis in data and measurement. So that, that's why they change. With science, you know, there are new discoveries that need to be worked in or new understandings that need to be worked into the standards so that our students are ready to, to enter the world with the, the most up-to-date science knowledge that there is and be able to think like, like scientists. So, you know, an example of that is in our, our previous science standards, they talked a lot about the scientific method and it was presented in a very linear way. In the new science standards, it's much more of a recursive way of thinking about science. You don't move through the scientific method one step at a time. It's teaching the kids now to go back through the process over and over again to iterate and get better at what they do. So that, that's how those standards get influenced by what's, what's developing in both careers, university, military. And we work to make sure that, that our students are ready for all of that, so. And then we have to measure it against lots of different measures. It's why we don't react strongly to any single data point.
Good answer. Okay, does anybody else have a question before I go to that?
Mr. Watson, did you have something?
Actually, I do have a follow-up comment. I was just kind of processing what you were just saying, Shannon. And to me, it's, it kind of speaks to some of the conversation we've been having with the NGL work and kind of the, the portrait of a graduate and thinking about students more holistically than simply data points. But it also seems at some point, as we become, as a board, more proficient at understanding some of these individual data points, that we need to move to a place where as a board, we have a bit of a data dashboard that's really looking at and considering multiple points at the same time. But then also understanding, you know, what are the levers that can be pulled to really influence that data, right? Because I'm sure you can throw lots of stuff up on the wall and say, oh, that's probably going to affect that or not affect that. But there's probably also some best practice. So I think one of the things that, that we as a board need to continue to be educated on is not just these individual data points, but how do they work together from a dashboarding standpoint? And then where are those levers that can be moved so we can help influence that?
Okay, okay. So like I said, social studies is the one area where it remained pretty much the same compared to 2019. And so it actually dipped like 1%. And that, that trend was, I mean, it's consistent with what happened across the state. The state dropped like 2%, I think, in social studies. So, so, yeah, that, this one is one of the more boring slides here. Oh, so I had some TVOS stuff, but it's not, there it is, okay. So, so the far right-hand column, you guys saw this, the TVOS stuff last time, all right? So overall, the district was a level five. That indicates strong evidence that students exceeded their growth expectation. We were four in literacy, five in numeracy, and literacy and numeracy together, we are five. Which is the same thing as composite, but. So, so when you divide it up by grade bands, and I kind of alluded to this last time. When you look at, when you look at the earliest grades, we had really, really strong growth in the early grades. It got a little bit weaker in the middle grades. And then in the high school, you can see, they were, they were all level ones. And remember, so what that, what that means is that there's significant evidence that, that students missed their growth expectation. So I don't have a slide for this, but when I dug into that a little bit deeper, what, what, what I found was that specifically the subjects, the transitional grade subjects, like English I, Algebra I, Integrated Math I, those three were, that, they were the culprits. Like, that's what caused us to be level one. So maybe, I don't know, but maybe the transition from middle to high school was harder during the pandemic for those, those students. So, but that's just my theory. So, does anybody have a question about this one?
Ms. Horn? Thank you. Okay, so we are proficiency dropped, yet we show student growth at level five. I don't understand that.
So, okay, so, so remember, remember student growth, when we're talking about TVOS, we're talking, we're taking the pool of students in Knox County schools, right? Also, all 45,000 that are tested.
So is it because we were higher than the state?
That's right, yeah, yeah. So because the growth expectation is based off of how everybody else did, essentially. That's right. That's right. That's right. So, so, you know, overall, like, you know, to, to kind of sum up this from a data point of view, like, this one, this one's kind of, like I said, I sounded a little bit like a broken record, right? Like, the, the pandemic was just, you know, despite all the hard work of teachers and principals and district folks, it just was, we weren't able to outwork the pandemic. And so, so I think, I think some of those achievement, achievement dips we see are, that's real learning loss. And, you know, we got people out there trying to address those right now. And we're trying to address it with our ESER plan that was just approved, so. Anybody else?
Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I think I would be, I won't be able to sleep if I don't say this. I want everybody to really think about using these scores as a way to judge our teachers' capabilities. It's a completely ridiculous way to judge our teachers' capabilities. And if, we should really be able to see this right now. There is no reason we should be using test scores like this to determine how our teachers are doing in the classroom.
All right.
So anyone else, any more discussion? Thank you, Mr. Rutter.
All right, thank you.
I actually really appreciate the time. I know it's a lot of work, but it is helpful to have these discussions. So moving on to the agenda, does, is there any discussion on the consent agenda, six A or B? So items and contracts, any discussion on one or two? Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So contract number one around the instruction partners, I read through that and I just, I'm trying to get an understanding of what the scope and benefit of instruction partners is to the system.
Good evening. Actually, I'm very excited to talk about this because it goes straight, straight to what we were just looking at earlier.
I thought you might be.
Yeah. So Instruction Partners is an external partner that has a really strong literacy team. And so they are, we know that if we can get K-2 foundational skills solidified for our students, their chances of success moving forward in, in all the subjects, but particularly in reading, is much stronger. As we did our needs assessment with the ESER plan, we have all the right furniture. We have the right curriculum, we've got great teachers, they understand the science of reading. And so Instruction Partners is coming in and helping us figure out, how do we, how do we shift the, the needle for our students who are, who are not quite getting there? And so they're going to come in and do some walkthroughs with us. And we'd like to be able to share some data so that we can use that to, to triangulate what's going on with our students and make some in-the-time decisions about how we provide interventions, how we're using our time. You know, how are we using our curriculum so that we can, we can learn from them? And it gives us a good thought partner in order to understand what we need to do next in Knox County.
And is that thought-level partnership primarily happening in at the district level? Or is that a school-based level with Instruction Partners?
We, we have two schools that wanted to do this work this year. And so they are, we're, we're piloting it with them to see how, how it will work. This right here is just for the data sharing agreement. We'll be coming back with a, a request to be able to actually do the, the scope of work with them. But we wanted to get started in being able to look at, at some data and understand some trends so that we can target our interventions and our support.
Yeah, I thought there was probably more to it, to the data, than the data aspect, which is why it was the, the prompting of the questions.
There will be. We were, so through CAF, we were able to do a little work with them before ESER was approved. And so this allows us to get that started. So as soon as all the contracts are in place, we can then actually start funding work to, to get the whole project moving.
Thank you.
Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Jackson, I have some questions too. Sorry. For the two schools that have, that want to do this, are their staffs aware of the kind of data? And I guess the question I really have, looking at the student data being collected, I, I think Mr. Rutter's already answered my questions about that. But in, in the contract, it says that the testing will be collecting data from the students that will be used to answer these questions. What are the enabling knowledge, skills, and mindsets teachers need in order to teach effectively for all students? What are the effective methods for developing the enabling knowledge, skills, and mindsets in teachers? And what are the necessary leader actions needed to support this capacity building? So I'm wondering how, how that teacher data is collected and if the teachers will be aware of that in advance?
So we're actually collecting it at the, at the student level, not reporting for students with subgroups that would be identifiable. We have masked the numbers so that Instruction Partners can't see who the students are. But we're actually looking at tracking students over time to see if, and we're in partnership with the teachers. So this is not about us coming in and saying the teachers will do something. We're having conversations with them about, you know, they didn't understand how a certain part of the assessment package worked in the curriculum they had. So part of the feedback from them, because they were involved in focus groups that helped to identify this as a need. And so the, the student data isn't going to them at that teacher level, it's going to them at the student level. And then we're looking over time to see if the students we identify are, are growing.
I, I understand the student growth part of it. I'm, I'm confused about how it will answer these questions about teachers. Because there, there has to be, the student data can't tell me the mindset of the teacher.
The mindset of the teacher is coming through the focus groups and through the feedback cycles that we're engaged with. So, for example, when we were in a classroom, one of the things that we were talking with the teacher about is the way that the practice was set up and the curriculum didn't fully make sense to the teacher. And so, you know, she was feeling a little frustrated with that. And so we were able to see that, in helping understand the design, we were able to help her understand how to implement the practice in a more effective way. So then what we would want to see is, do the students then benefit? Do we get the results if we do it that way? Or do we need to go back to the teacher again and think through, is this working for you? Do we need to make adjustments? How do we, how do we adjust it? So maybe mindset's not necessarily the, the right word there, but we're really, I mean, honestly, in the, the two schools we're working in, the mindsets have been great as far as what they want is for their students to learn and understand reading. And they've been very open to, to thinking about what do we need to do to help them. And one of the things they're asking for is time, which I, I can see that as a, as a need that, you know, they need time to really dig in and understand how some of this new curriculum is put together.
And have they been told on the front end that they are part of a study?
Yes.
Thank you.
So moving on, items, contracts, any discussion on three or four? Item five? Board policies, A or B? C or D? E or F? G or H? I or J? K or L? M or N? Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I believe at policy review, we had planned to pull Policy J 193, which is the student suspension policy, and discuss that at the next policy review meeting.
This is seven N, am I on the wrong one?
It's policy, yeah.
Yeah, J 193 is the policy. Oh, on my notes from policy review, all I have is it says pull till next time. So I think we were going to discuss that at the next meeting. I don't recall actually discussing this one.
Concerns, so.
Oh, no, I think we just didn't discuss it. I think it was going to be put back.
My, my, my recollection was just that Ms. Cook spoke about that one and said that she was just changing the language, but maybe Ms. Cook remembers. You did want to pull it? Okay, all right, okay, cool. Okay, so we will remove J 193 and revisit at the next policy review. And any discussion on O or P? And any discussion on O or P? Q or R? Ms. Owen?
On seven R, which is J-350, Student and, School and Student Health Services, below D, I'm sorry, below 10, which is in line 32, if we could have a cross-reference to the communicable diseases policy or cross-reference, just anywhere, I think that would be helpful. I'll say it again. Somewhere, I'd like to see a cross-reference to the communicable diseases policy. And it, it might fit below number 10, but at the end would be fine too.
So, is there any more discussion on that? Items S or T? U or V? W or X? Y or Z? I have a lot of policies. Starting back with the alphabet. I know, right? I think this is a first. AA or BB? CC or DD? EE or FF? Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have a question about anything right now, but what I would like to do, if, if the board would allow, I'm going to group these so that we don't have to go through them individually next time. Several of them kind of fall into a category, like changes that have to be done because of law, or we have some that are just minor language changes. So, I'll just, I'll just make a list of the categories they fall in and send them out to the board. I'll, I'll let, send them to Ms. Coatney and let her send them to the board so that you can have time to look at that. I think that will make things a little more.
That would be helpful, I believe. We do have a lot this, this time, obviously. So, moving on to grants, discussion on A or B? C or D? Contracts, item A. Regular agenda items, item A. Item B, which is discussion and possible action on the legislative priorities. And we did this in December last year. I did attach last year's priorities. I know we received an email about that, but that was more of a reference point, just, but I would like to hear the board's thought on that. I don't, I believe the General Assembly reconvened early January and how we want to proceed with that. Ms. Bab?
Yeah, I just had a question because when we got the one email asking about this and I heard Ms. Coatney, and she was saying she thought TSBA was going to come out with some recommendations the end of next week, or Susan, do you know anything about that?
Ms. Horn? Well, I, I, you know, they, they will definitely update their legislative agenda based on what we voted on at the Delegate Assembly last week. So, I looked at, I pulled out our legis, their legislative agenda and of course, I think, I, I had this random sheet of paper, so I think this is what they would have been had everything been approved. But I just kind of went through and made notes on a few of them that I thought we may want to look at. And in looking at the original, our 2021 objective, or legislative priorities, you know, I think we would probably want to delete the hold harmless BEP funding because I think that's already kind of been talked about. And then, also, the teacher performance evaluation, I would assume we would probably want to delete that. Then, the ones that I was on the TSBA 2022 legislative agenda, which I'm sure they've probably already updated this, we could probably go ahead and request a copy for next week, which I think is a great idea. But the ones that I was interested in that were different for this year, the use of temporary assistance for needy families, that's the TANF funds. So, the way I understand it, I was on a call, just so you guys know, I was on a call back in February and the TANF, let me, hold on, let me find my notes so I make sure I'm telling you the correct thing. So, the way I understand this, TANF stands for Temporary Assistance for Needy Families. And at the time, basically, sitting in Washington DC was $732 million earmarked for Tennessee for the TANF funds. So, what TSBA is recommending, and I believe we voted on it, did we, y'all remember that? Okay. Was there, so basically, we voted on recommending that the, the General Assembly allow local boards to use TANF funds for recurring costs related to funding positions that support social services. So, essentially, positions that are in our general purpose budget that would be specific to low-income families, at-risk families that would qualify. So, that was what they're recommending. There's all kinds of talk about how to use this money. And I think some of them were in the legislature last year and so that's still a conversation. So, this is what TSBA is recommending. So, essentially, it would increase, it wouldn't go through, it would probably go through the same funding mechanism as BEP, but it would not be a part of BEP, I'm assuming. It would be in addition to. So, that was one thing. Then, the other thing the TSBA was recommending and that we voted on is allowing school districts, schools, teachers, and students the option to utilize benchmark assessments to measure growth proficiency. Jennifer, did you want to say anything about the TANF thing before I move? Okay. So, the way I understood this, and anybody jump in if you understood it differently, regarding benchmark scores, the conversation was around, instead of using T and ready at the end of the school year, which we all know doesn't actually inform instruction for students because we get it next year after they've moved on to the next grade, using benchmarks instead so that it could be used to inform teachers on what students actually need. So, they're, they're wanting the General Assembly to, and, and the Department of Education to move towards something that's actually usable to teachers, the way I understand it. And then, the other thing that I thought we should, is we might want to look at options for third-grade retention. We talked about last week and approved a resolution around that to allow school districts to make retention decisions for third-grade students based upon school district data, which represent, or demonstrates an understanding of ELA. So, basically, it would, they're recommending that the General Assembly change that law so that it is more flexible for the district and if students are progressing and if they are doing certain things. So, I think it's basically around flexibility for districts. And then, there was one more, teaching incentives, urging the General Assembly to provide incentives to individuals wishing to enter, enter the teaching profession and pay for the practice tests for teacher candidates. So, those were specifically the ones that, that I thought we may want to consider adding to our priorities.
Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Horn, I think that was a, a great representation of a lot of the points that was made at the Delegate, Delegation Assembly. And I think, I'm trying to remember back to the conversation that we had as a board related to this priority list last year. I know one of the conversations we talked about is, does it make more sense for us to vote on a board on these issues individually? I think, Ms. Bab, you might have brought that up, about instead of voting this as a slate where it's yes or no, up or down, having each board member allow them to vote on each one of those. Because, one of the reasons why I think that might be helpful is, I think there was a lot of good things that happened at TSBA related to that agenda, but I also don't want to presume that everybody on the board would feel great about each one of them. And if we vote as a whole slate, then your no says, I don't like any of them, right? I do think when it gets published and we send it from the board, it needs to be sent as a board document, that this is what our board as a whole is agreeing to, even though individual board members might have voted no to specific ones. So, my suggestion would be that we take some of the feedback that you gave and if there's other priorities that in, in the individuals of us are aware of, is to create kind of a master list through Terry that we then bring to the board where we're able to vote on each of those items. And I don't know that, I mean, I don't know that we're going to have a tremendous amount of debate through that. I don't, I don't think it's going to add hours to our discussion, but it at least allows individual board members the flexibility to be for or against individual items.
Ms. Bab?
Yes, and I, I was not at the TSBA meeting, so y'all might have talked about this, but when we get down here to talking about the amend the BEP formula, we all know that they're talking about the BEP formula. So, I guess I wanted us to probably look at the way this is worded and it might even be Mr. McPherson needs to get involved because I don't know what's going on right now about what they're talking about, what they're proposing. And, you know, it's talking about very student-centered. I don't even, I went to that whole meeting that was here and I didn't even understand what they were talking about. So, I do think we need to, obviously, the funding is a big piece of this, but I, I don't know if we need to look at the way we've been wording it since they are looking at changes. And I don't know if any of y'all have any further information on that.
Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Watson, when you were talking about voting on each one, would consensus in a work session be acceptable, you think, or would it need to be a vote?
I think it's fine, I think that way is probably fine too. I just want individual board members to be able to speak to each, each issue and not feel like they're voting up and down a whole slate. Because I, one, I also think that weakens the document because I do think there will be some folks who do vote it down because they feel really strongly about a particular issue, but that doesn't necessarily mean they're against the platform.
My, what I'm thinking, Madam Chair, is maybe we should put this off until the next work session and we could have more work session time to go over each one. And then, we would have our TSBA recommendations as well.
I was going to speak to it.
I just know you got me, y'all might have been on the TSBA. They could really.
Yeah.
It was brought up quite a bit at TSBA. And I know, I, I think I might be the only person from our board that went to the legislative special session or whatever that they had. And there was some legislators there and it came up quite a bit in that conversation too. And at least in that group, there was pretty broad consensus about what the concerns were about this ongoing conversation. And it didn't seem like anybody was concerned about trying to make it student-centered. It was all about what does that mean? And is, and is this a way then to, you know, make it easier for voucher system to come into play? And there's some other things like that. So, I, I do think there's an opportunity to read word some of this and really address the heart of the current issue, which is the current conversation that's being had at the legislative level, to be able to speak to some of those specific points.
I don't know, Ms. Horn or Ms. Bab, I don't know who was.
Okay. I, I read somewhere, Ms. Bab, and I can't remember, it may have even been an email exchange, I think that I had with Mr. McPherson about the BEP, I think it was. I think maybe you made that point, that we needed to have, we should have a priority, right? It was you, yes. So, so, Mr. McPherson is already thinking along those lines, so I think that would be wise to change it and to reflect the current conditions. And then, the other thing I was going to ask, so, Mr. Watson, in thinking about, I definitely understand what you're saying about vote, you know, discussing and voting them individually. So, are you basically saying that we would go through, discuss them and vote on them individually, then we would then have another vote, another collective vote to say this is our slate? And Ms. Owen may have already asked this question. I'm just trying to make sure I understand.
Yeah, I think if you did it by way of voting, which was my original suggestion, then yeah, I think you vote on each individual item, whichever items get five or more votes, make the final document that gets voted up or down.
And then, we would vote on the entire thing? Okay, okay.
Yeah, so then, when we do send it out, you know, there is more power in saying, hey, this is what our board has said. It allows people to speak into the individual items.
I think that makes sense. Okay, thanks.
Ms. Bab?
Okay. I just had a clarifying question because I think Ms. Owen said at our next work session, but this is December, that would be January. Typically, we've met with our legislators in January and had this document to, for whatever reasons, discuss it with the legislators. And then, they had that document when session opened. I don't have any objection to sending it to them later and, you know, then. But depending on how our meetings fall, we would, might not have it for our meeting with them or when they began the legislative session. So, it doesn't matter to me. I just wanted to clarify. You were speaking to the January work session, Ms. Owen?
I was speaking to the January work session because we wouldn't have another one before then. But that one would be January 3rd, right?
Right. We, we, that's, our schedule changes, so we have the Monday, Wednesday.
So, they would be finished by the 5th.
Okay, yeah.
And if, if we don't have a meeting with them, I can deliver those.
Okay. So, it would be tie away enough.
So, that, that change probably would help, help the timeline for that. And Ms. Henderson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just curious, do we, when we create this document, do we work with our legislators to create this? To me, you know, last year, this seems more like a messaging document, not a document that's more of a strategic plan, working with our legislative body to come up with a strategic plan with tangible outcomes. So, do we work, I mean, we have heads of the rule committee, we have two members on education committee, we've had a, of the Senate in our Knox County delegation. Do we work with them to create this?
It, it might be more product, I mean, I understand what you, you're saying. It probably would be more productive.
I just think it would be more relevant to what's going on in Asheville.
Right.
I, I think our priorities are more of, this is, these are the things that are important to us. These are our priorities for the legislature so that our legislators can understand what is important to us. So, it, the way we work with them is to adopt our priorities ourselves and then share those with them so that they can understand what our priorities are. I, I think if we go about it the other way around, we run the risk of having our legislators tell us what our priorities are. And that's, that's not very good for local control.
Just seems to me from last year, we asked for money and no accountability. So, it just seems productive to get things done, to work together, and just come to the table together.
Ms. Bab?
I was just going to ask, is, are we having a scheduled time to meet with our state legislators in January? I don't know who organizes that. Is that Ms. Christie?
I believe so. We, we do not have it yet, but we'll work on that. Maybe a lunch or breakfast. We've done in years past. Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, in, in thinking about how to, it's certain, of course, we certainly need to meet with our, with our delegation. But I think we also need to remember that so much gets done in committees. So, we really need to make sure that we're engaging with the education committees now, really. Because we can, you know, it doesn't really help in, you know, to talk to our legislators if everything's already decided when it gets to the floor, they, you know, it's pretty much a done deal by that point. So, we really need to be working with our, with the, the committee members on the education committees now, you know, instead of waiting. I mean, I think that's, that's where we always, I'm sure Ms. Owen would agree. I mean, that's where we always, you know, that's where the breakdown, I think, happens because it's all done in those committee meetings.
If I can respond to that, I, that's one place where I've seen this document be very important. When, when a person has gone to a committee meeting to address a committee about a bill that they are carrying and has said that, well, Knox County School Board really wants this and here's why I think they really want it. And then, a person on the committee has said that their legislative priority says the opposite. And that's something that having this document is very helpful to our legislators for. Because when, when someone is there telling them, here's what Knox County wants, but they have a document that we have sent to them that says the opposite, then they know that that person is, you know, not necessarily giving them the best information.
Ms. Horn? Thank you. I, I would agree, Ms. Owen. I think that that's part of the importance of this document is just to be able, as an individual board member, to be able to say. is just to be able, as an individual board member, to be able to say, "I'm on the Knox County School Board, and here's my opinion. And in addition to that, our board has adopted this as one of the things that we are... We feel strongly about." So, it just carries that weight of, and you're not there... And then you're speaking on something that we've already voted on. It's something that, because you can't speak on it otherwise as a board. So, it has to be something we voted on, and so it carries a lot of weight. If we've voted on this and we can use that when we're having these conversations. And if it's not something that we have in our legislative priorities, you know, I think that's, it's kind of an easy thing to say, "Well, they haven't even brought this up." So, I think that's, that is important.
I agree. And I found it especially helpful with legislators who don't know us, a legislator who may be new, and having that first conversation with them. When they have that piece of paper, they know that we've not just gone rogue and telling them something else.
Okay, so, any more discussion? So, what I'm hearing is we want to move this to our January agenda to discuss, and we can all give our priorities or our wish list of priorities to Terry. And maybe Mr. McPherson, you could help us with the BEP priority there. I'm sure you have some ideas and input there. So, we would definitely appreciate your expertise with that one. Is there any more discussion on that? All right. Next is item C, and I'm going to turn that one over to Ms. Satterfield.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, going to give an update on the superintendent search. First, I want to acknowledge NAACP board members. We did receive a letter from NAACP. They had their own community meeting. So, I want to acknowledge their efforts in putting that together to make sure that we have as many opportunities for community voice to give their... Community people to give their input in the superintendent search. So, make sure you look at that letter. The letter will be given to our hiring firm, which is TSBA. There's a lot of acronyms right now to be considered for the superintendent criteria. So, thank you for sending that over to us. Next, the survey update. We've had over 1,000 people complete the survey as of, so far. So, please continue to encourage community members to complete the survey. And we've had a couple of people also send direct letters to our superintendent email account. So, superintendentsearch@knoxschools.org, and then also the survey on our website. And so, please continue to get your voices heard because that is what we will use to collect our criteria for the superintendent search. The superintendent committee, search committee, is working on the brochure. Our hiring firm did give us a brochure for us to look at and to give any feedback. That's due on Monday, so committee members, please look at that and give feedback. This brochure will also come before the board on the 8th. So, we will also look at it and be able to give feedback, too. But that is part of the adoption, is the criteria and also the brochure.
Ms. Satterfield, can you remind people when the survey ends?
Sure. December 3rd at 12 o'clock. So, the survey ends on December 3rd at 12 o'clock. Noon, noon, not midnight. Survey, knoxcountyschools.org, that's where you can find the survey. The survey closes December 3rd at noon. All right. Then also, we, our student rep did an amazing job with collecting student voices. And so, I'm going to give him an opportunity to talk about the process. Yes, thank you. He worked closely with Knox Education Foundation to get it done. And he's just going to talk a little bit about the process, but we'll also use their criteria, submit that information to our hiring firm as well. So, go ahead, Raymond.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Yeah, so kind of, as you know, at the last general session meeting, we talked about having student sessions specifically for students provide their input on this newsletter search. And we did carry that out. I worked with Knox Foundation with... I don't want to say her name wrong because I just forgot it for some reason. But I worked at Knox Foundation to set up these forums throughout the county. And so, kind of give you an idea of what these forums looked like. We had three forums. We had one at Farragut this past Monday at 4:30, one at Fulton yesterday at 4:30, and then also a virtual session that was open to the entire county yesterday night at 7:00. And so, in these forums, what we really did is, our plan was to split students up essentially into kind of smaller groups of like about eight to 10 people, who really became like about five students in each group, and let these students run through the three TSBA questions and just kind of discuss it amongst themselves and have, you know, one note taker who was writing down all the notes about what the students talked about regarding these three questions. And so, kind of at the end of this, going through these three questions, we brought the whole group back together and how the whole group kind of shared with each other what did they talk about and what were their answers to these questions. And we kind of wrote those down on a kind of bigger sheet of paper to make sure that all students were like, "Okay, yes, that's what we meant to say when we talked about that question and things like that." And so, I think our, the number of students who came, I won't give an exact number because I don't quite remember it, but I will say that it wasn't very high. Of course, 20s, 30s, somewhere in that range. However, of course, there was a very fast turnaround for this. We had about two weeks to work on this project. And there was also things being break in the middle of it. And that definitely did not help communication and effort to push this information out to students. However, I do think it was still a success for being something that I believe Knox County Schools has never really done, bringing in this direct student input into something as large as Sprint In Search. And so, I think in that regard, I believe we should really look to possibly doing more of these student forums to gain that input from students in the future. And also, I will say that, I won't talk specifically about the input because that's more for the next general session meeting. However, I will say that I believe this insight that was given at these forums was very useful and was quite interesting to see, and it might be different from the input that is gained from the community meetings tomorrow. And so, I think it would be very valuable for this board and for TSBA when we're looking for this new superintendent.
Thank you, Raymond. And before I have, I want to get to you, Susan, but I want to reiterate, just so we can get it... No, go ahead, Susan. Susan brought up a great point about conflict, potential conflict of dates. So, could you bring that up and see what we want to do as a board?
Yes, ma'am. So, the TSBA Law and Legal Institute will be on the afternoon of February 14th and the 15th. And I want to say it doesn't end until maybe 2 or 3 on the 15th. And that's, that is the day that was originally set as the first day of candidate interviews. So, we may want to maybe shift by a day and do the 16th through the 18th rather than the 15th through the 17th. So, I just wanted to make sure that the committee is aware of that conflict.
So, that'll be something that I can bring up to Tammy. Is there any opposition to shifting?
Ms. Bab, did you have a scheduling conflict or is that a later?
Mine was, though, next week with the voting. Like, y'all, I was on a plane when we originally scheduled the voting.
Okay, so if there's a conflict with Tammy, I'll let the board know, but we can operate under assumption that we are changing those dates? The 22nd.
Originally, it was the 23rd.
Okay. Any other questions about the superintendent search? I'm going to do a recap of the community meetings, but I want to see if there's any questions right now. All right. Okay, community, we have a...
Oh, yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, just really quick, I forgot to talk about this when I spoke about our student forums. Kind of reiterate what Ms. Satterfield talked about, the community forum, the survey, sorry. It's a very important aspect of this new superintendent search. And so, just directly for the students, you can also fill out the survey, and your input in these surveys is very important. We're working on, I'm working on, working with KEF and also the people inside Knox County Schools to kind of push that survey out directly to students and ensure that they know where to find the survey and that they know that this survey is an important aspect of the search, that you really should fill it out.
Thank you. So, I hate that I wasn't at the meeting last time to discuss, but I did get to watch it live and appreciate all the conversation. There was one thing that I was intending to bring up that we, that I brought up at the meeting prior to that, but wasn't, I don't think got rediscovered. I've been able to review the website that we put up and really appreciate all the information that we have there. There's a couple more things that I'm hoping that we can add. One is whatever, whatever schedule that the committee has, the search committee, that that would be put there. I know that we'd public notice the meetings, but if we can just put that schedule as it evolves, I think that could be helpful. And then the other thing that I think would be good to put there, and I know we have it in our agenda list already, but I think if we can have one point of information for all of our superintendent search stuff is also the minutes from those meetings, when they're produced, and possibly video of those meetings. I know we had discussed that, and I think Ms. Bounds even talked about that that has been a possibility in the past. So, I think the more information that we put out there in terms of the process itself, I think the better the public will feel comfortable with that. Certainly, there's going to be some folks who don't care at all about it, but I think the more information that we can put there, the better, so.
Thank you. So, yes, I just want to reiterate one last time. Go to the Knox County Schools website to find the survey where you can provide your input. The survey closes this Friday, December 3rd at noon. Also, tomorrow, December 2nd, there's a series of community meetings with the final one being at 6:00 PM. We will be at the AJ Building in the boardroom. So, please get your voices heard because we are rocking and rolling. That's all. Thank you, Chair.
And just to follow up a little bit on what Mr. Watson had just said, the committee's only had two meetings today, right? Okay. Just for public knowledge, I just don't want people to think that they've been meeting.
Right. And in some ways, that kind of speaks to my point, is that they have only had two meetings, but I don't, I don't know if people might have a perception that they're meeting and they don't know and things like that. So, I just think if we have one place where we keep that simply, I think that could be helpful.
All right. So, Ms. Satterfield, do we have public forum?
No, public forum today, Madam Chair.
All right. So, meeting is adjourned.